Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Mayor.
Let me call to order this work session of the Commission and myself, and we'll dive right into the agenda. I think we're expecting a couple of other Commissioners to come, but as this crowd knows, I like to try to get things started on time. So, let's dive right in. Annual Tourism Update by Discover the Palm Beaches. Sergio, you gonna start us off here?
Sorry.
Very good.
Hello, good morning, everyone. My name is Sergio Piedra, Senior Director, Community Engagement and Advocacy for Discover the Palm Beaches. It is great to be here. I think we feel when we come here, we're among friends, our best friends, in many ways.
You say that to all the cities. But we appreciate hearing it, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to the city Commissioners. We are here to give, well, first of all, thank you for welcoming us back. We have been going around the county, doing a lot of these presentations, and West Palm Beach, my home city here, is the first city to invite us back, so we must have been doing something correctly. But we will give you a quick tour of what's happening in West Palm Beach and also in some of the county. But without further ado, I'll start things by saying we value an excellent partnership we have with our capital city. We've welcomed Portia Holt to our Flagler Advisory Board, which is made up of marketing officials throughout the county. Amande Fana, part of our Community Advisory Committee, which looks at social inclusion, DIA issues, and of course, we've sponsored For Fun Flagler, Sandy Land, and we'll continue to do so. And of course, the city and CRA, the West Palm Beach CRA, are paid partners of our organization, and we appreciate that investment in what we do. And as we represent where we are, we value the tourism, the kind of power we have as a local tourism organization, a promotional organization, and our main goal is always to drive the tourism economy, and the tourism economy right here, especially in West Palm Beach, which is the center and heart of what's happening. And you'll see how good things are going right now. But I'm not going to bore you with my words. We have a brand-new advocacy video, which our team has produced. It's very short, you know, it's only three and a half hours long, but no. But I will present that to you, and hopefully you'll enjoy it.
... any better in the Palm Beaches. Our community is not only a thriving home for residents, but also a fantastic destination for visitors seeking the Palm Beaches' promise of genuine hospitality that welcomes everyone. At Discover the Palm Beaches, the official tourism marketing organization for Palm Beach County, we're reaching more visitors than ever before and bringing direct benefits to our community, making tourism a win-win for everyone. Tourism generates over $10 billion annually for the local economy, as well as over $7 billion in direct visitor spending. What does that mean? Visitors generate more than $260 million in local taxes and fees. These are costs residents don't have to pay. Plus, tourism supports nearly 90,000 local jobs, providing stable incomes and opportunities for career growth right here in Palm Beach County. Tourism helps fund community events and cultural activities, enriching the lives of residents by making the Palm Beaches a vibrant, diverse, and culturally rich place to live. Additionally, tourism helps facilitate efforts to preserve our natural resources, keep our beaches beautiful, and protect our sea turtles and wildlife, all funded in part by tourist development dollars. All of these dollars come from a 6% bed tax on overnight stays in hotels and vacation rentals, paid by visitors coming to the Palm Beaches and not by residents. Discover the Palm Beaches works for everyone in Palm Beach County. We work together with all the tourist development council agencies to connect with businesses and residents. Together, we represent Palm Beach County to the world. There are a lot of travel destinations competing for our share of visitors, and our job at Discover the Palm Beaches is to establish a recognizable brand story, to show how incredible our destination is, from Jupiter to Boca Raton to Lake Okeechobee. Thanks to these efforts, visitors are coming to the Palm Beaches to experience unsurpassed shopping, beaches, restaurants, nature, arts, golf, resorts, and more. Tourism is a cornerstone of our community's prosperity, contributing to quality of place and quality of life. It's the reason why the Palm Beaches continue to be extraordinary for residents and visitors alike. To learn more about our efforts, scan the code or visit thepalmbeaches.com/advocacy today.
Thank you for indulging us with the topic.
I'm sorry. We supposed to... Thank you. And I'd like to bring up our next presenter, Gustav.
Morning, I'm Gustav Leibel. I'm the Senior Vice President of Research at Discover the Palm Beaches, and it's good to be back here. There's a lot of, there was a lot of great high-level stats in that video. I'm going to dive a little deeper into specifics into West Palm Beach, and since this is our second time here, I'm going to give an update on everything that's sort of happened this year. So, it's been an interesting 2024. Overall, for the county, it's been positive, but there's definitely been little pockets of challenges and also some strong performance. And West Palm Beach has been one of the cities that's had some of the strong, strong performance in here. So, this is visitor growth for the first seven months of the, of the year. You can see it's tracking pretty well with the overall county. January is a little bit challenging, and then March and April had this interesting flip of Easter being in March, so you see the sort of numbers a little reversed there, if you will, in terms of performance looking year over year. But when we highlight into West Palm Beach and the hotel room nights sold compared to overall county, which is on the yellow bar there, you can see a much higher performance in there. We have, we track downtown West Palm Beach, just the downtown hotels, and we also track the broader downtown with the PBI hotels in there. So, in these two markets, we're, we're missing the 45th Street and some of the stuff on, around the outlets in there and the markets, but those, these are the closest reads to what's happening in the city of West Palm Beach that we have. One of the things that's been very helpful, we'll see in a second, is the convention center performance in here. So, this is the downtown West Palm Beach and PBI collection of hotels, 18 hotels, almost 3,200 rooms, and how they performed year-to-date. This is through August. You can see positive performance, two and a half percent more room nights sold, and the ADR, about two and a half percent more, so the total revenue, five percent more. So, that's 576,000 hotel room nights sold for the year. The convention center has been one of the jewels here in the performance so far year-to-date. And if you look at the past year, 22, 23, this around 50,000 room nights, that's sort of where we thought the cap was with the current hotel inventory in there, the amount of rooms that we're able to, to secure in room blocks for the convention center, but we are, we surpassed that this year, 65,000. And you can see that, that, that has made that impact, the economic impact to the city, go from the 30 million range to over 50 million in economic impact for the year. And the lodging revenue, obviously, that's the hotels, but food and beverage, $10 million. That's not just the convention center, that's not just the couple hotels in the room block, that's everywhere. It's Clamatta Street, that's City Place, that's, everywhere that anyone that's going on a convention can eat. Looking into the future for the convention center, here's the pace report we have. Now, you can see the 65,000 room nights for '24, way ahead of where we were in '23. I want to highlight, '25, we're on pace to be at the same level as we were in '24, and '26, we're a little bit behind pace, but '25 looks to be a good year as well for the convention center. In terms of total spending, so this is spending by not just visitors, but also residents in restaurants, lodging, and recreation. In the general West Palm Beach zip codes, you can see since the pandemic, it's significantly increased, and from '22 to '23, we've increased as well to almost $1.2 billion in spending among these sectors annually, and we expect that number to be even higher for '24. One thing I want to highlight is on this, we have a new platform called Destination Man. We've developed over the last 18 months, and we've been using it all this year. So, as I mentioned, we've had a year of sort of mixed performance, and now not every market segment has been performing to all the, to their best of their ability, I could say. And we've used this tool, which looks out for the next six months, every single week, and we see overall performance and how we expect it to perform. And when we see that there's some needs, some challenging needs, where it's in groups and meetings, or if it's on, among leisure travel, where we've been using our strategies and tactics and deploying extra resources to try to impact and have positive results. And what we've seen in this current environment, where our peers in Florida have been discounting heavily, we've been able to maintain our hotel rates, and with that, maintaining the overall revenue, where the discounting doesn't necessarily always work as effectively or as it planned, and some of those markets have had declines, where we've been able to hold on, onto our market share. And we also do a resident sentiment study. We just finished this for 2024 here, so I brought this last time, so now I have the updates in there. One thing I really want to highlight, pulling out all the rest, West Palm Beach residents in this study, and quality of life as a metric, that was 55% of residents thought tourism brought good quality of life. That is now up to 65%. That has improved significantly year over year. There's a couple of things in there that have kind of held in, maybe are directionally going down in terms of creating shopping and restaurants and entertainment opportunities. We do an ROI study on our annual performance, and we created this infographic this year, so this is highlights everything that we do in terms of marketing and sales, promotion, what does that return to, to the economy in there. So, we found that for every $1 that we invest, we return $3 in bed taxes. So, that's what funds us, so we're able to generate more revenue than what we're receiving from the bed tax. That translates also to $109 in economic impact for every single dollar that we spend. And what that means is, if, what would happen if we did not exist as an organization? We think that visitation would drop by 20%, hotel rooms would sell 42% less rooms, and the total economy in Palm Beach County would shrink by 5%. Lastly, what I want to mention is the Tourism Master Plan. We brought this to your attention a year ago. Now, we've made some progress on this. This is a screenshot of the landing page that we've created. It's pbc tourismplan.com, and on here, you have all the information that's up to date and what's happening in the plan. There's a work plan that's on there, and, and every single report that we've received is on there for you to look at. This is the steering committee that's running the plan, and then here's the links that have the information on there that you, that you might be interested in. What is the plan? What has been happening in the plan so far? We've done a familiarization tour in here. We went to 80 facilities in Palm Beach County. 20 of those were in the city of West Palm Beach. We've had stakeholder interviews, one-on-one interviews with over 500 stakeholders. I know a number of you in the room here have participated in those, so thank you for your participation. If you haven't had a chance to participate, you weren't available during this time, we're doing virtual interviews, and we also have the November 6th and 7th as days to do in-person interviews again. So, we can definitely get you in touch with CSL who's doing it to have those interviews if you haven't had yet a chance. Also, in, on November 7th, we're having a state-of-the-industry event. We're going to have a town hall opportunity for anyone. That's another opportunity for you to come and have your voice heard. There'll be some time carved out for an update from CSL with some discussion and, and feedback opportunities in there. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Milton Segaro.
Thank you, Gustav. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity. As you can see, we can say we've been experiencing a good year. You know, it's, it's been full of opportunities, some challenges as well, but I think we have two things, a great team in place, collaboration approaches from the TDC perspective to the cities and the stakeholders, and also we have a plan. We have a good plan, and I would like to share with you a few of the things we are doing in conjunction with some of the other agencies across the county and many of the cities across the county as well. First, you know, this is our, our goal, our North Star, and what we're trying to do is every time we do an investment, we, we are trying to impact the visitor's experience. And we have right now two main areas in which we can do that. One is the technology that we are buying, developing, to really engage with them, and the other one is how we are evolving our brand, which is our most important assets. Just, just to let you know, the state of Florida just recently released a study on the value of the tourism brand for the state. They hired this company, they did this, and they took like almost a year, and the current value of the brand of the state is $142.1 billion. That's the value of, of our brand, and we would love to do something like that for us. We're going to try to, to do it in, maybe in the next year or so, but we believe as well, we have a very powerful brand as a destination, and that's those two, the, the technology that we're, we have access to and the brand that we have are two components that can really change the experience of the visitors, and the more we engage into that, the better it is for us as a destination. With that in mind, and you saw this in the video, but it's really important that we always keep front and center the economic impact and the enhancements in the quality of life and place that, that our industry brings to not only our stakeholders, but all, all of our residents. And here you can see more than, more than 90,000 people depends on this particular industry across the county. And this is a model that I would like to share with you. We are seeing growth across different segments of our industry. And what I would like to recap is how tourism, it's part of that, and how, at the end of the day, a visit to West Palm Beach or any of the, any of the cities in our county could be the start of a very powerful and, and productive relationship. Everything starts with a visit, and when you come to your place and you like it, most likely, you would like to live in that place. You know, there's, there's a relationship, and you want to work in that place, and if you want to leave and you want to work, most likely, you would like to invest in that particular destination. And that cycle, that, that vitality wheel, it's when you add, and think about everything you're doing as a city, and how does that fit? And think what the BDB or the DDA or the CRA start, and then you have a very powerful non-stop move, moving forward about development, not only that could start it with, with a visit to this place. So, that's, that's the reason why in most, in most of the most well-developed cities or destinations, let's think about Orlando, Orlando, for example. Orlando, now you have many different opportunities in terms of economic development. Everything started with tourism. And here, in our county, specifically for our city of West Palm Beach, tourism plays a very important role into the overall development of the city. So, let's keep that in mind when we're thinking about what we should do as a, as a destination. We cannot do, do this alone, so you, here you have a lot of other partners that are working with us across the county into moving forward our objective. But this is the most important part that I would like to share with you. Which one are our five pillars? What is driving Discover the Palm Beaches to work hand-in-hand with cities, with other agencies, with county, with, with other destinations as well? So, we have five. The first one is revenue optimization. Miami-Dade and Broward County opted to, in this particular year, to establish a, a approach of discounting their room rates, trying to get more business. In our case, after a lot of meetings with our stakeholders, we opted to focus on maximizing revenue. Two very different approach. In our case, based on the results of last, last month, we are the number one, last month, we were the number one in revenue optimization in, in the, in the state of Florida, while other destinations have dropped, specifically Miami and Broward. That type of approach didn't work. In our case, we said, you know what, maybe we're going to, we're going to lose one or two points in occupancy, but if we maintain the integrity of the rate strategy of the revenue, we will pay off to the destination, and it's been working so far. So, in every single sales, marketing, partnership opportunity that we have, revenue optimization is the number one goal for us. The second one is how we keep developing the organization and the destination. There are two key important components. Gustav, Gustav mentioned the master plan. The master plan will help us to create the next 10 to 20 years of development for this destination. We need to, we're listening to the needs and expectations of our stakeholders and residents, so we can pair that with good strategy in development. So, we have a plan that will, number one, maintain the growth of our industry. Number two, check if this, this things that we're creating could be feasible in other areas of the, of the county, if that is sustainable, and exactly create the, the roadmap for growth and success in this industry. So, I know some of you has, have participated, but please, we need your input. We're going to be collecting input in the next, I would say, three to four months, until we come up with some specific recommendations, and so far, we've seen a phenomenal input into this. The second one is the convention center. You, you saw the numbers, and even though a convention center always brings impact, impact to the district and some other places, the fact of the matter is that West Palm Beach is the number one manufacturer of, of the convention center. With the addition of 400 more rooms in that convention center, what we have done is to elevate the positioning of the destination to the mid-sized tier convention centers. That's the sweet spot for us. We don't want to be Orlando, that's, 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 that's another type of business. We have a medium-sized convention center. That's it. That's who we are. So, we need to make sure that we create the infrastructure, in this case, through additional rooms, so we can keep pushing and elevating our positioning amongst the top 10 in the mid-sized convention center in the nation, and that's exactly what we need to do. That's, when, when we accomplish that, once we have that hotel, maybe in 24, 30 months or so, I can assure you, we're going to double the numbers, and we're going to keep bringing more business to the destination in need periods that will keep impacting not only the city, but also the district and some other places. So, that's, that's, that's really important. The other three components, collaboration, we can, we can't do this alone. Advocacy, we need to make sure that people understand what we're talking about, and also making sure that people believe that this is a welcoming destination, that social inclusion and sustainability are part of the DNA of what we're doing as a destination. Partnerships, this is across the spectrum of the industry, the different type of partners that we have, from the state to different organizations, events, you know, companies, airlines, that's, that's how we portray and position the brand. This is the new campaign, the Palm Beach Collection. This is a different treatment to the positioning of the destination, because what we're trying to do is to accomplish that you curate your own vacation when you come to any of the cities here in, in, in the Palm Beaches. And what we're trying to do is to create the opportunity to create your own vacation based on your needs and expectations. If you want to go only to West Palm Beach, we have a collection for West Palm Beach. If you want to go to the south side of, part of the county, we have a collection for that. So, it's the flexibility that, that campaign will provide us as a, as a brand. Here are some of the examples. In this particular case, we have the same approach, we just launched this campaign, but just for meetings and conventions, making the convention center the most important part of that particular campaign. The other type of things that we're trying to do is to bring events to the, to the city. We have events for golf, we have events for shopping, we have events for different type of things. So, the other pillar that we have from our brand is wellness. We're, we're really good on that. So, we, in conjunction with a, a company, we created this particular event. It's, it's going to happen here in West Palm Beach from November 1st to the 3rd. We're expecting 2,000 enthusiasts in the wellbeing, filling up all the hotels and really going to all the restaurants, November 1st to the 3rd. We believe it's going to be the first of three years that we sign with them, which will increase from 2,000 in the first year to close to 10,000 visitors in the third year, so it's, it's a lot of expectations, and it's a different market that we need to open up for, for the destination. Almost at the end, Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. We need to keep improving how we serve and we engage with our customers and visitors. So, we are paying for this particular training, which will, is going to be available to all the frontline employees across the entire industry, so we can solidify and amplify how they deal with the visitors. So, and finally, as I think Gustav mentioned, we have here at the Kravis Center on November 7th, our annual meeting. Please join us. It's going to be a phenomenal opportunity, not only to listen about what we accomplished, but where are we going with more details in the next couple of years. But again, we worked really hard with Portia. She's a great asset for the city. I know you are thinking about a new campaign and all of that. We want to work with this, the city. We want to provide as much as possible from information to support, and I think if we collaborate into that, it's going to help us tremendously to maintain a good messaging on the market and not send different messages, which is key. So, again, if you have any questions, we'll be here to answer those. If not, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could go back to some of the stats you had on your fifth slide, where you talked about hotel performance, actually, it's slide four and five. I, I was just curious as to what period of time you're comparing these two? We, we saw some differences, 4%, now 4%. Is that the year prior, is that year-to-year?
It's a year-over-year, so it's the same time last year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And that's for all of the charts, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Just curious. Questions, Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. It's exciting to see how tourism has a positive impact on our economy here, and how, I'm extremely appreciative of your efforts and partnership throughout the county and the city of West Palm Beach, and I'm just curious, what are the ways that we can continue to support your efforts for local job creation? Because I know you touched on the impact that that has in our city, and I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can as a, as a body.
Absolutely. That's a great question. As a matter of fact, last week, we had two job fairs, and we had 827 people came. So, what we're seeing is that, you know, after the COVID, two or three years after that, you know, I don't know what happened, but people said, I don't want to work in tourism, you know? I really don't want to work in another...
Government.
Maybe, but the fact of the matter is that we're seeing again, that trend to come back, and we're seeing more people look into our industry. I, I have to tell you, there are a few options that are happening right now. We are part of an alliance. The eight universities and colleges in the state of Florida, they created this alliance. They, they said that as we speak, only 6,500 students are within the eight programs of the, of the, of the state, entire state. Eight universities from Florida International to Pensacola, 6,500 students for an industry that it's 1.3 million people working. So, as you can see, there is a need to really step up, and what we're trying to do is to create, not only to provide the regular jobs that are needed, but as well to create the other type of jobs in technology that is so important, in revenue management, in, in accounting, in human resources that are key into this. I, I'm all, saying all of this, Commissioner, because I believe we're going to see the next wave of additional professionals coming into the industry, and I can tell you that West Palm Beach being the, the epicenter of many of the things that are happening in tourism will see a direct impact into that. Having opportunities through job fairs at the city level in conjunction with things we could do will certainly help and attract additional, not only workers, but as well potential residents to, to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for all you do with the city. It's so great to always see you at all of our events. I know Sergio is always standing next to us on the stage for the Sandy Land and everything. I really appreciate you just, your... I really appreciate you just, your continued commitment to West Palm Beach. My first, well, my question is, I wanted to go back to slide, the slide I think was right before this slide, but just in terms of, I'm sure that you have the research, but, you know, when you look at a month like June or August, doing significantly better than year over year, is there a reason for that? Do you look and see, did we, was there an event that didn't happen the year before that was drawing extra people, or, you know, other areas that, you know, might be drawing tourism, those months that we could, you know, kind of replicate that, you know, the next year if it was a one-time thing, or just for us to keep that in mind, that some of these things that are drawing significant crowds, that we should be open to continuing to do those things?
Yeah, absolutely. That's really important. And I think Gustav will, will expand, but I can tell you that we know exactly the type of business that is coming on a daily basis. We have the capability with our technology to identify the occupancy by, by segment on meetings and conventions, on leisure, about how are we doing and how we're expected to do in the next thirty to sixty to ninety days. And we can compare and gather all that information and create those models that help us to create the forecast. But yes, between the sports commission, between the groups and conventions that we, we bring, between the leisure efforts that we put into the marketplace, we can really pinpoint the, the demand for our destination, and we can translate that into potential occupancy for the destinations. And we know the composition of each and every one of those silos in our, in our different markets. Gustav, I don't know if you wanna add something to that?
I can expand, that a, a lot of the performance downtown has been with the convention center. So it's been a very busy year for the convention center. I think there's been few weeks where there hasn't been anything at the, at the center. And also, the Hilton West Palm Beach was under renovation last year, so there were periods of time that, you know, a few hundred rooms were out, out of inventory, so there, that is sort of reflected in that as well. But the convention center wasn't necessarily available to, to sell during that period last year with that.
Thank you.
I, I also wanna applaud you for your use of data, and, and how you are being very strategic, and, and being able to identify the opportunities. It's not just throwing stuff against the wall and seeing what sticks. It sounds like you have a very analytic approach to tourism and, and where the hotspots are. So I applaud you for that. Hopefully, the city can benefit from that. Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned the tourist tax, I just wonder if you can give like a, a high-level overview of where those dollars go?
Absolutely, yes. This year, we should get eighty-six million dollars, between eighty-six to eighty-seven, we'll know maybe within a month or so, total tax collection, the six percent. That six percent is divided in, in, in six cents. There is, it's, it's, it's an order, but you have one cent that goes to a special fund at the TDC. You have two cents that goes to, to repayment or infrastructure development, like the convention center, like the two ballparks that we have. You have the rest of that particular, dollars goes into a specific fund, that from there, you have a specific breakdown of those that goes between TDC, us, the sports commission, the cultural council, and the film. And on top of that, you have another bucket that takes care of the ERM for beach conservation and, and, and sustainability. And pretty much, that's the breakdown. At the end of the day, of the eighty-six, eighty-seven million dollars, approximately thirty percent goes to Discover the Palm Beaches, which represents, this last year was twenty-seven point two million dollars, this coming fiscal is gonna be twenty-eight point two million dollars. And that's the operational budget, of which sixty percent of our income goes to marketing-related initiatives, which is one of the highest in the nation. Normally, you see that number that goes around forty-five to fifty percent of the total budget goes into marketing. In our case, we've been able to establish a model in which allow us to put the money where we need to put the money, which is to promote and bring more visitors to the destination.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, again, thank you very much for that presentation, and I'm sure we'll have you back.
Anytime, Mayor. Thank you so much.
And now, we're gonna turn to a presentation from the city's chief marketing officer, Portia Holt. And I think this will be her first time kinda addressing us as a group with some of her, her thinking. Good day, gentlemen, thank you. Several months ago, we, we heard Portia, and the thinking was, and we've talked about this here, as a bodies, I think the city is now mature enough to have its own marketing campaign. You could see, certainly the statistics, they are from Discover the Palm Beaches, and they're doing a great job, but they are spread through all the cities in the county. And, and so I think, have thought, and that it would be a good idea. Tourism is only one of the pillars, that will be part of our marketing, the city's marketing campaign, but since we are hearing from Discover the Palm Beaches, I thought it'd be appropriate to hear some of Portia's thinking with respect to the city's efforts to market ourselves in the tourism space. So, without further ado, Portia, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me, allowing me this time to present basically what the strategic thinking is for tourism and the marketing of the city. So based on the previous presentation, you can see that our, there are opportunities here in the city for tourism growth, and that's not only due to what our city has to offer, but it's also because we are a destination hub. We have the airport here, we have the convention center, we have our cultural institutions, and we have the Bright Line. So, let's see here. So our goal is to redefine and capitalize on the city's identity as a destination hub, optimizing impact on overall tourism as well as building awareness and engagement in the local market. Now, keep in mind for the local market, we are talking about the city of West Palm Beach residents, but also in terms of the broader marketing, we're looking at cities within the county and the region. So Visit Florida attracts tourists to the state as a whole, while Discover the Palm Beaches has done an excellent job, as you can see, highlighting the, the county's cities in, in their collection campaign this season, that's just one example. And they basically hand the torch over to cities to pick up and take up that marketing from there. So our mission and goals are to increase brand awareness of West Palm Beach and its differentiation from other cities in the county and in Florida, and to attract and grow the amount of new and returning visitors by leveraging Florida's position as an international destination. We are a world-class city, and we need to keep that in mind when we are marketing. So we want to create a bold campaign that's just as iconic as I Love New York, Pure Michigan, Virginia is for Lovers, but we wanna be, remain authentic to who we are and be able to follow through on that promises as well, especially as we continue to grow. So I wanna just take a step back here and show a brand mapping diagram where we are talking about strategy right now. And you'll see that right under strategy is the story, and from the story, then you start talking about marketing voice and mission, and the identity is here on the left. So most people, when we talk about branding, they're thinking of the identity, the logo, the website, that's off to the side, and we will be touching on that later in the year in terms of rebranding the city. But right now, what we discovered is that in the current brand guidelines and brand book that was built and released in 2014, there really isn't a reference to tourism at all. So that just speaks to the growth that our city has had, the importance level that's, that's come, the opportunities that have come here, Mayor James's leadership. And so we're looking at tourism as a brand extension of the current brand. And in order to do that, we're putting these aspects aside, that takes a lot longer, and we're focusing on building the story out. So the campaign, what we're going to do is the campaign is built around content, a content-centric framework. What that means is that we already have a framework of a brand that we know we're going to shift a bit in some way at a later date, but we also have a lot of activity, events, initiatives that are happening right now, that we can talk about right now, and that we can look at in more of a lifestyle aspect. Those initiatives are going to be put into primary pillars of visitors, residents, and businesses, and that's gonna allow us to tell the story. The narratives can then be developed and amplified, amplified through advertising and promotion, leading back to our content platform, which will be the microsite, I'll get into that, and that's where audiences can discover more about West Palm Beach. So we have the city of West Palm Beach, we'll have our primary value proposition, you'll see we have these content pillars, visitors, residents, and businesses. Sorry, let's go back. And then so, each pillar or initiative within the pillar can be strategically placed in the market independently, but they all support the primary value proposition. And we've seen this in what Discover the Palm Beaches presented for their collection, so Discover the Palm Beaches, they're talking about Palm Beach County, they have a key primary value proposition. Each city or each collection can be marketed independently, or each initiative can be marketed independently, but it still feeds back into the value proposition. And the content can be generated from each of these pillars, and we can talk about it in our owned media, which will be the microsite, collateral, social media. So one of the things that Palm does, and Palm Beach, the Palm Beaches does for social media is they have a hashtag campaign, see to preserve, love the Palm Beaches, visit like a local is going to be very important to us, so we'll be strategically also tagging those when it comes to our tourism stories, so we can reach a broader audience, and that's gonna be important on social media, I'll get to that later. Paid, which is digital editorial, email marketing, and earned, we'll be using in-market influencers, journalists, and our partnership editorial. So yes, what is this value proposition that we've landed on, and that's also ultimately will become the tagline? And that, that's, there's more to West Palm Beach. We came across this, just, one of the things, most of the task force team right now is outside of the city, and they had not visited the city in several years, several, several years basically, and were surprised to discover what was here, and especially as I took them on through the neighborhoods, they didn't realize how much was here. I'm a resident, I came here three years ago from Miami, and my neighbors don't know everything that's going on here. So this is simple by design, it's highly recognizable, it aims to inspire curiosity and promote discovery, and expands the audience's perception of the city while establishing an optimistic tone for our narrative. And then we, we go back to the content pillars, and we break this down a little bit, you'll see visitors, we'll be talking about travel and tourism, residents, life and culture, businesses, growth and stability, and these all intertwine. What's good for residents is, are also good for, this is set up here, it's also good for the visitors. What's good for the residents, it's also good for the businesses in terms of attracting employees here, and vice versa. So this all is able to, we're able to speak about these aspects here, and there's a general area where the messaging can overlap. For the launch of this campaign, we're going to focus on that general area, where there's this overlap here in messaging, because that's going to get us the most miles, and then the content will become more differentiated. I'm gonna put aside residences and businesses for now, because we really are talking about the tourism aspect. The residence and business side will be further developed, and it will also go into, sorry, this is moving on me, it'll also go into the rebrand. So really talking about then our aspirational audience, make sure I'm on the right thing. Our aspirational audience is a lifestyle approach, so our aspirational transcendent demographic are millennials, which are aged eight, twenty-eight to forty-three, and Gen Z'ers aged twelve. Sorry, I have the wrong, I've, well, it's, it's from nineteen ninety-seven to twenty-twelve. So their top domestic destination is Florida, and they prefer large cities. The visuals drive their travel choices, followed by real-time updates, influencer recommendations, and personalized content. This group is far more likely to be influenced by advertisements fueled by beautiful imagery and content highlighting interesting and inspirational experiences. This is very sensitive here, and it keeps jumping. Also, there's a surge in blended travel bookings, that surge is at seventy-two percent, and it is fueled by millennials, they're taking the charge. Blended travel used to be called bleisure, it's kind of an ugly word, it's business and leisure, so if you're going on a trip for business and you decide to take some personal time to explore, that's the business leisure. So that's, there's a surge there. And also, they are looking for AI personalized recommendations in terms of their travel. This is sourced from Expedia, all other information that I'm bringing in is from Skift. Skift is available to travel research publication that's available to Visit Florida members. And then that general audience, the trends here is that, that Google has come to dominate the top of the travel funnel, and destination websites consistently show in the top five. What does that mean? So when you're looking to book travel, typically you would go to Expedia or Booking.com, and more frequently, people are going to Google. And if you've noticed, if you've booked travel lately, Google will have airline rates, car rental rates, hotel rates as well. So it's becoming dominant in the travel funnel. And within that travel funnel, destination websites are consistently showing in the top five. So what that tells us is we need a destination website. The booking window for personal travel is at thirty-plus days, which has, there's less of that spontaneous travel, there's more of that planned travel. What that will tell us is that for the editorial content on the microsite, we need to be looking out for some more long-term, long-term events to be promoting. And also, the most affluent households take the most trips, which is kind of obvious, but they seek special experiences, so that's also the type of items that we'll be curating on that site. In terms of the design strategy or the art direction, we are looking at a wayfinding-inspired system. So you'll see here that there's bold colors and bold text, and what we want to do is be able to bridge the gap between the virtual and the physical. So we want what they're seeing virtually, what they're seeing in the marketing campaign, when they actually get to the city, they, they, they're familiar already with some of the wayfinding that we're putting out there. And that's something that we'd have to work with DDA with, as well as some of the other organizations. And then also, in terms of the image, it's an image-first design strategy. So you'll see here that you have big, bold imagery that's taking up most of the page, and that is because we want people to have a window into what they can experience here in West Palm Beach. So obviously, then that means that photography is important, and we were able to secure a photographer that had done the seventy-fifth anniversary of Bow Harbor, because they were, Bow Harbor is very small, there's only a few experiences, they've got a small stretch of beach, and he was able to really express in that marketing campaign and the book that they did, really the vibe of, of Bow Harbor shops. We are also fortunate that he was trained under Milton Glassler, who actually did the I Love New York campaign. So he was an art director, a creative director first, and so he can frame the imagery in a way that is built for a campaign. So we have here, just gonna go back here, so we'll be able to look at elements for nature, and these are from the photographer's Instagram, architecture in our city, as well as the lifestyle. So digital marketing with the microsite, it's, it will purposely stand apart from the government's websites, so that we can create visual continuity in the web, in the, in the campaign. So if we are having virtual continuity, I don't know why this keeps shifting, I mean, if we keep having, if we have virtual continuity and physical continuity, we need to have visual continuity in the campaign, so that would be the microsite as well. We'll test branding and storytelling tactics, we're looking at having a travel journalist write the blog copy, so that we can have an opportunity to have more of an editorial perspective on the website in terms of what's happening each quarter in the city, and allow for amplification of signature city and partner events. So the microsite is just serving as a landing page with top-line information, it's not supposed to be very heavy in content, you'd land on the page, you'd look at what you need to look at, and then would redirect to the partner website. And we plan to launch it in January twenty twenty-five. And now, there we go. And then for paid media, we're looking at this segment of the audience. Feeder Markets will start the launch of the campaign, because we want to launch in January, and these are some of the planned placements. Some of these regional publications may shift a little bit, we're still working out some of the media buy there, but we plan to use the media's assets to drill further into the demographic and psychographic audience in order to establish benchmarks for the campaign, because we, they're really working with, Visit, Visit the Palm Beaches, as well as Discover the Palm Beaches. There's a lot of broad information, but there isn't a lot of information specifically for West Palm Beach, so we need to benchmark that. Then of course, we have partnerships, I'm sorry, this is, just keeps jumping around. And the idea here, these are just, this is just a few high-level conversations that I've had throughout my few months here, in terms of how we can partner together. few months here, in terms of how we can partner together aside from amplifying the events on the microsite. And so there are things that, what we're looking at is really taking advantage, so for example, we have the holiday, we have Sandy, the Ben is doing their ice skating rink, City Place has snow. If we do a media partner, how can we package this all together and really have something that can be, you know, visitors can look at throughout the city in different places, and not just us marketing and them marketing. And so taking all of those events and experiences and looking at them at a more, at a more aligned perspective in how we're approaching that marketing aspect. Also, there's trade shows that I want to participate in, and that's not only because we need to get the word out specifically. I'm looking at international as well, because we have international visitors that are coming through. Orlando has many international visitors, so does Miami, and we need to encourage them to come here. But also, I personally would like to make sure that the message is including that we are mid-priced, family-oriented, and we have cultural entertainment. Because as they were talking about the brand of Palm Beach, there's immediately this super-high price point and it's pretty exclusive, super affluent, and I think that we get lost in that messaging sometimes. So really, the mid-priced, family-oriented, and the fact that we have the cultural institutions is something that we really want to make sure that the trade is aware of. From there, once we do the launch, we will continue to monitor, evaluate and roll out the campaign. Two of the highlights, I'm not going to get too far deep for time, but two of the highlights, we want a downloadable community kit, which would really be for the businesses in order to roll out that branding. Neighborhood branding, we're looking at more of the, from a district, a higher district level, and branding that so that all fits into the communications message that we have. And that eventually will help the tourists, as well as the residents. Downloadable and interactive travel itineraries, we collaborate with Discover the Palm Beaches, because they do have that AI technology. And then a printed map with partners that are focused on specific neighborhood highlights, so that would be the DDA as well as Discover the Palm Beaches. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Portia, thank you for that presentation, and I appreciate the amount of thought that has gone into this, and I'm pretty excited about, you know, what the campaign will ultimately look like, but it sounds like you're off to a good start. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Mr. Fox?
Thank you so much. I really love that there's more to West Palm Beach, because when you were talking about how some of your neighbors maybe don't know all that's in West Palm Beach, I think there's so many ways that you could take it. Like I had a friend that was here last week because of the hurricane, she used to live here twenty years ago, and she, you know, the downtown was unrecognizable to her. But then I have people that have lived here forever, and you know, a lot of people think of the downtown as West Palm Beach, and yet, you know, we have grassy waters, and we have a golf course, and we have an outlet mall, Curry Park and things in other districts. So I love the idea that you're going to be highlighting all these neighborhoods. One question I had, it was partly came out of our last presentation, just talking a bit about how the city is the top beneficiary of the convention center. That is obviously true for people that are here and maybe walk to City Place and things like that. I was curious if you, how do we market to the people, once they're here? A lot of what you presented today was how our marketing to people to get them here. But once, you know, they're here for a convention or something else, is there any, like tactics that you're using, I guess, to market the things that are in West Palm Beach, once the people are already here and not going to, you know, Palm Beach Gardens and Lake Worth and things like that?
I think that's where the travel itineraries come in, because we recognize that people usually may not be coming here for West Palm Beach, but they arrive here. So then, what can you do? So for example, the Flagler Museum, so if maybe your objective was to go to the Flagler Museum, we have the historical museum here in West Palm Beach as well, and then maybe finding a restaurant that supplements that, or the food tour, or something like that. So for the, in the short term, there would be those built-out itineraries. And then more in the long term, it will take a little bit longer. I think it's really important to have that map. Because when you get off at the bright line, for example, you're not really sure where to go. And I believe that we can get some partners involved in helping fund that and put that together, and draw out some maps that you can physically see the layout of the downtown area. We would eventually have the districts that are highlighted, because we have all these other neighborhoods that are sprouting up. And to be able to always cultivate that and push that out, so there are things, so they know what's available to do.
Mr. Lambert?
Thank you so much. This is very exciting to see, and I'm really appreciative of the collaboration that you mentioned and the list of partners. And I know you've been working with Discover the Palm Beaches, so I think that's exciting. However, I know you're only a department of one, and you've mentioned many times, you know, listing of different events and listing of, so can you talk to us a little bit about how, are you relying then on the collaborations and just maybe linking to them directly? Or will we need additional resources to be able to make sure that all of those are updated in real time? I love what you said about planning thirty days out. And I know sometimes collaborating, of course, with our own city events, we'll know those, but if we're collaborating with outside events, I want to make sure we stay on top of that.
Yes, thank you for asking that. Well, I come from a hospitality background, and so normally what is done is a full editorial calendar. And so that's just a map of everything that you know. And then, you know, usually, two months out, going back and seeing what else is in market that you can supplement for that, and then putting that out there. So I think it's a lot of me reaching out and being in touch, and people getting into the habit of reaching back out to us and saying, hey, we want to make sure that we're on the microsite, or even further out, you know, that would be probably three months out, ninety days out, we want to do a co-op ad. I think the media partners here, I had a long meeting with the Palm Beach Post last week, are really interested in that collaboration, because they're seeing these private advertisers come in with one of their events, and then that's where the co-op aspect comes. But we'll always need money for advertising, because advertising is frequency, just like real estate is location. So being able to take advantage of those opportunities from an advertising standpoint, whether it be on our own, or as a, on our own or in the co-op space as well.
Thank you. I have another question.
Yes.
Can you go back to slide twenty-one, if you're able to?
If this doesn't keep jumping on, it's very, I don't know what Milton did up here, but, let's see, twenty-one. Yep.
No, that's fine, that's good. So on this slide, is this for future, or is this part of this campaign? Because I know you were talking about the neighborhood branding and things like that, and I know all of us would be extremely interested in being a part of that.
Yes. So right now, I'm speaking to a consultant to talk about the neighborhood branding. It falls, and that's where this map, we're kind of overlapping in the city rebrand and the tourism aspect, but this would fall in the tourism and, sorry, in the visitors and the residents content pillar. If we're doing a rebrand for the city, and we're talking about even the tourism, that story aspect, the neighborhoods have to support what we're talking about. That all has to be intertwined as well. So we have someone that we're planning on having look at the neighborhoods. And then the reason why we lifted it to a district standpoint is because it will allow him to liaise first with the commissioners in pulling out the high-level information, and then filtering down what else we need in order to focus on that community engagement, the neighborhood feedback, et cetera. So it is a bit far out. I would say probably at the end of Q1, Q2, that we'd start that. But it all falls into, touches on the full rebrand. So what my approach is, I'm trying to do as much with the tourism, because we are looking at a fresh rebrand. Do as much in this activity, have things flow while we're in high season, get the information that we have out right now, have a little fun, be able to play with colors and in terms of the campaign. And then, as we're putting together the RFP for the branding aspect, there are a lot of things that we'll already have resolved and that we know we want to do, so that process goes a bit faster.
Awesome, sounds exciting, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I was just thinking, I know that in my family's travels, we arrive at airports, and we often see a lot of branding at airports. And it reminds us of things, oh wow, we didn't even know that was here. And sometimes it's large visual aids, and, you know, everything that you need here in this city is right here. Have we thought of doing anything like that, branding at the airport, and, you know, putting some, some sort of things that like, like that branding that you came up with, and showing all that West Palm has to offer, you don't even have to leave.
Exactly. Well, Discover beat me to it. They are building out some sort of visitor center at the airport, and so then I will be waving my West Palm Beach flag to see what we can do there. Any of the co-op aspects that they're doing, because it is, the airport is the county, so any of the aspects in advertising, they know that I'm, you know, ready and willing to work with them to help push that messaging out, and we have a close relationship. So as soon as there are opportunities, I know that we'll be able to partake in them.
Any other questions? Go back to the slide that says there's more to West Palm Beach. I was intrigued by the simplicity, but it covers so much territory, and it could be transferable if we're trying to attract businesses here. That statement as a value proposition, as you call it, there's more to West Palm Beach, it's probably, there's so much more that these potential businesses would want to have, that they're aware of, even to our residents, as Commissioner Fox picked up on, there's more to the city than probably even they're aware of, and certainly too. So I love the simplicity of that, so thank you. All right. I don't think there are any other hands, so thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you for the time.
Look forward to hearing more. Okay, we'll now turn to the infrastructure surtax projects update. We go from the exciting sexy topic of tourism to nuts and bolts, infrastructure, it's what we do as a city.
Exciting, too.
It's exciting, but not sexy. Well, some might think so, if you're in the hard hats and stuff.
Kevin Volbrecht, the Director of Engineering Services, Vladimir Jano, our CIP manager. We're going to be describing to you a nice benefit that we encountered with the sales surtax program just in the past year. So basically, we're going to go through some of the background history on the wholesale surtax program that was initiated back in 2016. We're going to talk about what the projects were that were identified under that program. And then we're going to talk about the additional funds that we have been received from the program itself through the county, and where, how we want to allocate those funds accordingly, and then whatever the next steps are going to be to do so. So basically, the original surtax program was initiated back in 2016. The county wanted all of the municipalities to enter into an inter-local agreement that needed to be taken place by, I believe like by August of that year, in order for them to put this thing on the ballot, which we did, and we went to the commission in May of 2016, approved via resolution for us to go ahead and enter into this inter-local funding agreement with the county. This is all before my time, I didn't come until October, but it was a nice thing. The specific list of fourteen projects that were identified to be funded through the surtax program for the city of West Palm Beach was approved by the city commission in September of 2016, under Resolution 30916. The other thing that was included in the inter-local agreement was there's a, an oversight committee that needed to be established to give some oversight as far as how we were managing the sales surtax program and all the projects and the funding that was involved in that. We have been meeting with that surtax, sales surtax oversight committee on a quarterly basis ever since 2018. The most recent meeting we had was last week on the sixteenth, and then we have another one scheduled for January. The overall program itself was basically a one-cent sales surtax that was going to be added to people's purchases for certain things, some things were excluded. But overall, the county is the one administering the program. The program was such that it was a ten-years or $2.7 billion, whichever came first, with the stipulation that there would be no more sales surtax collections after December 31st, 2026. The plan for the program that was in the inter-local agreement was, the Palm Beach County was going to receive thirty percent of the proceeds. The school district for the county was going to receive fifty percent of the proceeds, and then twenty percent of the proceeds of the $2.7 million was going to be distributed to the municipalities who wanted to participate in that. So basically, you're seeing that the county got eight-hundred-and-ten million, the school district got one million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, one billion, three, one-point-three-five billion dollars. And then the municipalities were getting five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Now.
Million, million.
Five-hundred-and-forty million dollars, I'm sorry. Now, the distribution to the municipalities is a little bit more complicated, because the, it's based on the population of the municipality, and then also the population of the county. And there's a, there's an equation, it's basically West Palm Beach population divided by the county's population, plus two-thirds of the incorporated areas in the county's population. And that determines a percentage that each municipality would be distributed. And that also varies on a yearly basis. So originally, the, when the surtax program was put in place, there was anticipated that the city was going to receive about $60 million total for the whole program over ten years. Now, we, the fourteen projects that were identified, there was parks projects, roadway projects, lighting, and the Western Communities Public Safety Facility, which is a training facility for the police and fire. There was the Pleasant City Community Center, Coleman Park Community Center, Gaines Park Community Center, Howard Park Community Center, and Palmetto Park. There was a project in roadway for South Dixie renovation, Broadway Avenue, Parker Avenue rehabilitation. It was greenway and multipurpose paths, like a overall program. The Flamingo Park neighborhood improvements, Almani Park neighborhood improvements, there was a citywide roadway improvements, which was a broad-based funding, as well as citywide lighting improvements, and then for the public safety complex itself. The original budgets that were prepared for this program, when I got here was, they had allocated certain specific numbers for each of these various projects. The overall total was fifty-nine million, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. We have been managing the sales surtax program to that amount ever since it started in 2018. And all of our allocations, and all of our adding projects, or incorporating or implementing projects that we had, all had to stay within that number, is which, the way we approach this whole thing. We receive revenue on a yearly basis from the county, and we're anticipating we'd probably get six million a year for ten years. We started out getting a little bit more than that, but we were always getting more than six million dollars a year. Then, last October, the city received about eleven-point-eight million dollars, which at that time was about seven million dollars more than the fifty-nine million dollars that we were managing to. And we thought, is this right? This can't be right. We have a fifty-nine million dollar budget, why are we getting more money? We don't want to, we don't want to touch that. Okay, so we allocated what was remaining of the fifty-nine million dollars, and we put that other additional seven million dollars into reserves until we could determine whether or not that was legitimate or not. This year itself, we got another eleven, almost twelve million dollars. And we needed to verify, hey, is this right or what? We don't want to spend it and then have to give it back. So our finance department worked and actually discussed this whole thing with the county's budget and management division, and found out that actually, yes, this was legitimate. There isn't really a specific cap for what the city, the cities received in the program, just like there was for the county or the school district, those are fifty percent and thirty percent maximum. But because of the percentage calculation for each municipality's distribution... But because of the percentage calculation for each municipality's distribution, plus the variations that take place over the years, there's thirty eight municipalities in the county. Only twenty twenty one of those municipalities actually signed up for this program. So it ended up determining that, yes, this was legitimate, that we got this additional funds that we could actually use it. It was completely legitimate. So now we feel good about that. Now, what do we do with it? And so uh basically, we received about twenty three.
This is the sexy part of the presentation.
This is this is almost as good as tourism, but not quite.
Family money, yeah.
The uh basically, we're ending up with, instead of fifty nine million dollars, we have about eighty two million dollars in the whole program. And I'm going to turn it over to Vlad, who's going to talk about how we uh propose to distribute the additional funds in accordance with the uh the the program itself, so.
There's more to West Palm Beach.
There is more. That's a broad, broad word.
Well, morning, everybody, mayors and commissioners and city administrators. Um Vladimir Jano, Capital Improvement Plan Manager. And to follow Kevin, Kevin mentioned that we will talk about that twenty three million dollars that we will receive in addition to what we were managing to before. So um when we look at the list of the projects, we wanted to stay, we we have to stay within the fourteen list of projects that we had. Sorry, let me go back. Uh that we had uh in the original list that was approved and that resolution in 2016. So when we look, we looked at some of of the projects, we uh the projects that we are proposing to distribute that revenue to is uh in parks, we wanted to two hundred and fifty mi- uh thousand dollars to Gaines Park, because that one that is a cons- uh construction project that is currently ongoing and to give some breathing room in case of any unforeseen condition to that project, because we 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 maximize uh the value that we had on hand. And also, uh Howard Park, which is a project that's currently designed, ready to go out to bid. And based on the estimates that the engineer worked out for us and consultants, the we asked, we we needed about three gig million dollars. So we allocated that three million dollars toward Howard Park. So for parks projects, that's a total of uh three point two million dollars that's allocated to those two projects. And when we look at the original distribution value for parks, we were at twenty six percent. So with those funds added, that that um added, that distribution um percentage is now at twenty two. So which is fairly evenly distributed. Now, we look at the other projects that were in roads. We uh and we see that roads is something that we have a very big need in the city for. So we um po- uh propose to invest eleven point three million dollars in citywide roadway. And I'll pass it to Amanda, who has a point to mention about uh the value to the one-time funding.
Thanks, Vladimir. So as you recall, there you you the City Commission approved one-time funding dollars um that were from general fund. So one of the things that we are looking at, and we will be that the we'll be come back to you on, is of the um one point six million dollars in one-time funding that was allocated to paving and sidewalks, we're going to reallocate those dollars and bring that to you for the one-time funding to go to property restoration and grant match. We have still a huge need within City Hall and out and other buildings that are city-owned to do upgrades to those facilities. And because of these additional dollars that we have now found under the mattress for roadway improvements, we're going to do that reallocation. That doesn't mean in future years, we won't be allocating general fund. If we if we're able to, we'll bring that to you. But for now, we feel like we have sufficient dollars for the next few years to manage roadway um improvements and upgrades. So you'll be seeing that coming to you forward.
Yes, thank you.
Vladimir, we have a quick question. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Vladimir, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said right before you um went into this pre- this slide. Did you say that we could only use the additional funds on the pre-approved projects?
That that is correct. The list of the fourteen uh projects that were approved by City Commission.
Okay. And that's because these funds are still through that tax program and these were pre-approved through that program?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
President Ward.
Yeah, could you just explain the the need for an additional three million more dollars at Howard Park Community Center?
Yeah, yes, um and Leah is can can answer, was working uh hand in hand with the consultant. So previously, we had four point nine million dollars dedicated to that project. And also, we've experienced since the pandemic, cost increases um that, you know, that's beyond our control. So the latest estimate that we received from the consultant, they needed about three million dollars. So that's why we uh propose uh investing that into that that project so that they can go out to bid.
Let me add to that, because it's a significant increase, obviously. That project, the the Howard Park Community Center goes back to probably two thousand, where's Leah? Probably two thousand seventeen, something like that. It's got, it went out and was designed. And then the neighborhood didn't like that design, so I had to go back out. It's been out for design and for procurement a couple of times now. So the the escalation is about in line with what you've seen in construction escalation from two thousand seventeen to now.
Just follow up.
Yes.
Uh you just see a stark difference when you see Coleman Park Community Center for three point five and then Gaines Park, which is a significantly big community center as well and important to that community for the same amount that Howard Park was. And they're only getting an additional two hundred and fifty thousand, and then you're just bumping up Howard Park three million. It just seems like a very, very stark contrast between the two.
Those other ones received other funding sources, as I recall. You want to?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh Gaines Park actually is about a twelve million dollar project. There's the sales taxes only contributing four point nine million dollars towards that project. There's a number of other funding that was added to Gaines Park itself. So we're just allocating, we were proposing to allocate an additional two fifty to the Gaines Park just as a contingency factor to help us with the the twelve million dollars that it's currently under contract for. The Howard Park Community Center is estimated, it's going to be about uh, you know, almost eight million dollars. Therefore, we'd need the additional three million dollars. Coleman Park Community Center also was originally about three million in sales tax funds, and we added another uh like a million, a million and a half to that uh previously in order to cover that. So the escalation in the construction costs for these community centers is something that we've been experiencing, and we've been trying to accommodate that as best as we can with your help, uh being able to allocate additional funds from other sources uh to be able to do those. So it the two fifty to Gaines Park is not really indicative of how much Gaines Park is costing and the other funding sources that are paying for that. Howard Park is specifically out of the sales tax program to.
Perhaps you could, uh you or someone from Parks and Recreation do a one-pager showing these different projects and the total cost.
Okay.
For each project, so that they can compare apples to apples and provide that to the commissioners and myself. Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. I just had a uh follow-up on Commissioner Ward's. I was going to ask the same question. I just want to clarify, I know that for Gaines Park, there's been a few issues with, you know, the pricing changing from our original budget. And we've gone back and found other fu- funding sources. But do we have, is it completely funded right now between the community center, the aquatic center, all the the pro- parts of the project are? Is it completely funded? Um just because I I agree, I see this stark di- difference, and I just want to just make sure that we are um continuing to to keep that project moving forward.
At this point, the community center and the tennis facilities are completely funded. The aquatic center is not entirely funded yet.
However, you will be getting a one-time funding request coming soon. That will include the aquatic center dollars.
Commissioner Lambert.
I was just going to reiterate that I think we all want to make sure that we're equitable in our, in paying attention to all of our perks. And thank you for your efforts in that, and I appreciate the mayor asking for more detailed information of the cost and where those funds are coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, just so, when you see these budget numbers up here, some some of these projects are completely funded from sales tax revenues, and others have a mix of different funding. So when you s- when you see the budget here, doesn't mean that's the entire cost of the project.
And that's why I want that one pager to go out uh and indicate if there are some missing, um if there's a gap between the project costs and what what's available for funding, so that the, we can see that. Okay, any other question before he continues? Okay, Vladimir, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So uh as we are talking about roadway, we uh invested one, we're proposing to invest one point three million dollars, uh eleven point three million dollars into that uh funding. And that takes us to a fo- total of forty five million dollars, which which our original distribution for roadway was fifty eight percent. And now with the additional dollars, that would be uh fifty five percent of the cost. The twenty two million is going into uh the roadway uh funding program.
In that program, uh the projects will be done consistent with the study that 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 we're doing, correct, in terms of priority?
Yeah, so uh we have the uh P C uh payment condition index that's being developed right now, close to being done. We expected by the end of the year or early next year for that to be available to us, so that we can use that. That would be one of the aspects that we use to um fund the roadway projects. Also, we talked about the CIP committee, who meets and the values that we um, the 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 pillars that we evaluate projects on. So those things also will be used in order to get those projects going, whether we have utility uh on the ground. And it's so that's, all of those things will be taken into account when we have the PCI index in order to get those projects going. So then the next part of the sales tax uh what it was, is a lighting program. So originally, we had one point five million dollars into that program. So we um, I mean, two point five million dollars into the program. And we are proposing of that twenty two million to add one point five uh additional dollars uh to lighting. Originally, that distribution was four percent, and now with that additional, you know, the combination of the values added, we'll make it about five, five percent of that fund will be dedicated toward lighting citywide into uh citywide. And also with the um si- um the safety complex uh out west, originally, that program allocated seven point one million dollars. And now we are proposing to allocate seven point five million dollars in addition to that project because of the circumstances, knowing that that project will cost us more than that. But with the value that we have, you know, to help us at least get to design some planning stages, then we can start fi- you know, making something feasible uh 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 for that project. And then if we need additional funding, then we'll work with you, City Commission, and everybody to 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 get that funding available. So um the original percentage was twelve percent, and now the additional percentage, we added eighteen percent to that project. So that, so when we looked at the total, originally, we were managing to fifty nine million, one eight, one eighty five, nine hundred and thirty three dollars. And with the twenty three million dollars added, the total program is eighty two million, it thirteen, nine hundred and twenty three dollars.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. When I look at slide nine and slide thirteen, um originally on slide nine, um under public safety, it talks about uh the western community, but it also identifies the fire station, um public safety, and evidence storage and the impound yard. But I don't see that reflected here on uh slide thirteen. So is that because we we?
Okay, well, yeah, to answer that question, to to make the space enough so that we can, the project description remain the same. So all those um programs that you see, all the description that you see in pages uh in the pages before, I would say from pages seven to nine, remain the same. So nothing changed. We 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 got to the description of the project.
Okay, so we don't anticipate needing any additional dollars for the items that that I just mentioned on on page nine?
Well, we anticipate, we 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 currently are, we we currently in design for that project and phasing for that western community. So when we start getting uh the design ready and trying to go out to bid, if we need additional funding, then we will ask for it.
Just to further explain, the those, that, all those elements are in the same location. So the fire station, the safety facility, and the storage, it's all in the same location. So it's all essentially one big complex.
Okay, so we have not initia- we have not begun any work on this project yet.
Only only the very early stages of the design. We selected a consultant that is going to be putting together the planning and the designing for that facility itself. I mean, overall, I mean, it could be several tens of millions of dollars, really, if we wanted to build a real, uh whatever it is that the the police and fire would like and we we can do. We're going to do what we can with the money that we have available. But we know that we definitely need more money than seven point one million dollars for that facility. That's why we're asking to be allocating seven and a half million dollars more towards that. That's not going to be able to complete the entire training facility, but it's going to be, it's going to help us to at least get started on the phased program that we're taking uh that, you know, that we're implementing in order to do this training facility. You know, there's a fire tower that's needed, there's a gun range that's needed, uh you know, all the other things, evidence storage, a fire station nine. Lots of lots of aspects to the training facility, what's the western uh safety complex that um could end up being very expensive. But we, you know, we have to do this in increments and do it in a phased program in order to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boudouzey.
Thank you. On that note, have we identified or um or or purchased the land that would be required for that facility? And um the second question would be just whether, how far along are we in, you know, terms of when might this project actually get started?
Yes, it's actually going to be uh on city property out uh adjacent to the ECR on Roebuck Road, Roebuck and Haverhill. And the project, we anticipate we're going to be able to start construction probably sometime, I would say, twenty, in twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I I know that the program is ending. I just wondered, have we received all those funds that we will from the program for the penny tax?
We think that with this last allocation that there gave us this year, uh there, that's probably going to be it. Because I think the two point seven million dollars is going to be received by the county or has been received by the county. And so we're not expecting to get any additional revenue next year. But if we do, we certainly will allocate that accordingly and uh bring that back to your attention so that you can give us your opinion on how to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Different topic. Uh Kevin, you spoke about property restoration, that there would be dollars allocated for property restoration.
No, that was, that was me.
That was you, okay. Hey.
So that that's for, that's for city-owned properties, so City Hall, the comp- the city complex, parks, those kind of things. Because we we've got a lot of deferred maintenance that we've got to catch up on. So the the one point seven million dollars that um the city administrator brought forth a couple of months ago, that was for one-time funding for roads and sidewalks, will now be reallocated to uh city facility maintenance and upgrades. And it also includes grant match dollars as well. So we have a bucket of dollars that's for facilities, and then uh grant match, those all go into the same bucket because of these these additional dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much for that very exciting presentation.
We got some more.
Oh, you have some more?
Yes, so um because because also, we wanted to take this opportunity to highlight you on some of the progress um that we. Talked on the project. No, no worries. Um so Howard Park Community Community Center, uh the project status is currently in design. This is a synopsis of uh what the project will look like uh when it's built. Also, um the community centers, Coleman Park being currently in progress, Gaines Park also is under construction. Uh Pleasant City itself, that project has been completed. The citywide roadway, we are currently have a twenty six projects out of that bucket fund that's been completed. And that we have about seven of them that's still in progress. So with this additional dollars, we'll add um more, we'll do more projects onto that uh program. And one of the projects are also a flamingo park neighborhood improvement uh of that sales tax money, Lake Avenue and Flamingo Road was completed. So uh this is a a, you know, status of that. Then um for the Greenway multi-use purpose path, we currently are, recently, we uh completed the Clear Lake Trail project that was funded out of that sales tax program.
Before you go on, that's a good example of one where it had multiple funding sources, the sales tax was just one of them.
Thank you. And also, we talked about the um safety complex uh out of in in the western communities where uh the land where we, and and this is a program that's currently available for that, for that project. And this land started uh last month um in September. So with that, we are propose, the the revenue that we receive, we proposing to uh distribute it as so, as such, uh that we presented uh to you. And also, what we did, uh the CIP committee met and evaluated that proposal, that we are, that distribution that we talked, that we talked about this morning, and that occurred on the, on October fourth. Also, we met with the Citizen Oversight Committee that we talked about, that was supposed to be established as part of that program. We met on October sixteen, and they concurred um with this distribution program. And now uh with um, we are also trying to secure concurrence into the proposed distribution that we uh presented today. And if all is okay, then the next step. And if all is okay, then the next step will be to prepare an F resolution to the City Commission for approval to, so that we can go ahead and start distributing those funds, distributing those funds, and get those projects started.
Very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert?
This is just tremendous, and, you know, whether we call it a windfall, or a blessing, or, you know, found money under the mattress, as was mentioned, you know, just looking at this 11 million dollars additional money into roadway improvements, when we had budgeted one-time funding of, you know, I think about 1.5 million, to see a nearly 10 million dollar increase, and I guess I just don't fully understand, how did that happen? How did we end up, I mean, I know that the county sent it over, but what?
You don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
Well, is there something we can do to encourage this in the future?
All right, just take the money and run.
Well, I think, I mean, the, the way it was, they did, they did certain modeling for estimates of what they anticipated would come in, both countywide and for each, for each municipality. So we were operating under the assumptions that were provided by the county. And so fortunately, those assumptions turned out to be wrong, and we got a lot more. So we just wanted to make sure that we have kind of a consensus on, on moving forward with the F resolution.
Whether we should accept the money?
Yes. And allocating it to where we're allocating it, which is generally the same distribution percentages, as was mentioned by Vladimir. So that will be coming forward as an F resolution.
Anyone object? Okay, Commissioner Fox, you object?
No, I don't, don't object. I just wanted to ask about the lighting improvements. Will it be similar to the roadway improvements that, we have a study that we're just kind of going down the list of priorities?
Yes, actually, the lighting study identified certain census tracts within the city that were prioritized based on a number of factors. We're digging deeper into those and actually doing photometrics on various neighborhoods, et cetera, so that we can identify the actual need for how much additional lighting we may need, either replacements and/or adding lights. And so that process is also underway right now. Then we can identify to be able to get a contractor to go out and actually install the additional lighting. And so we're in the process of doing that right now. Lighting is also something that has gone up a lot recently. You know, basically, just the standard lighting with the, the, you know, we call them Cobra Heads, the ones that are pulled with an arm out on them, those are roughly about $6,000 each. The fancy decorative lightings, the Victorian poles, those cost somewhere between 20 to 25,000 dollars each when we put those in. So lighting is very expensive, and so adding an additional million and a half dollars to the lighting program will certainly make a big difference.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Will we be getting a list of the different projects, like, for example, on the road projects? I mean, that's, that's vague, just to say roads, but I presume we have a list of priority projects, as the mayor mentioned, related to the PCI?
The, the PCI, all of the data and all that stuff has already been collected, we've got numbers and everything like that. They're working on the process right now of developing what the prioritization is going to be for that, which, we will bring this back to the commission in a workshop sometime, I would say, January, maybe?
Yes, I think it'll be important for you to see that. It's, it's a comprehensive look at all the roads and sidewalks in the city, and the, how we prioritize those will be based on that index. And also, as Vladimir mentioned, sometimes there'll maybe grants or whatever that prioritize it as well. But generally speaking, the condition of the road is what's going to drive the priorities. And that'll be important, I think, for the citizens to see, because even with this additional dollars that we're dropping into the bucket, we're actually going to have an estimate of what it will cost to do all of our roads. It'll still exceed we have here, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, now, thank you for that very fine project, presentation. Okay. Mr. Green, North Flagler Heights and Incentives Proposal?
The mayor mentioned he likes to save the most interesting presentation to the end, so.
But that person couldn't come today, so we ended up with you.
I'm filling in. Anna and Angela, I invite you, come on up if you'd like, sit here, but. So we're here to discuss the North Flagler Corridor, Rick Green Development Services So historically, at least over, prior to recent years, there's been very little development in the north end of the city. With the zoning changes that we did in the Curry Mixed Use District and the redevelopment of the Rybavich-related Marina, we started to see an increase in development, particularly in the north corridor of Flagler Drive. Projects such as Riverstone, the Spruce, Northwood Square, Alba, and Alara are underway, and we've got several other projects in the pipeline. So with the opening of the Icon Marina Village and the construction of Alba, residents in the north area of the city have started to express a concern about the future of their neighborhood and what it's going to look like. So we did a preliminary assessment of the North Flagler Drive Corridor, and I'd like to kind of walk you through the changes. And what you have before you is the presentation. There's a spreadsheet we did that is a parcel-by-parcel analysis that you're not going to be able to read on the screen, so we wanted you to have that. So an interesting point is, over the summer, we did an analysis of building permit value over the last four years. We did this in June, just to kind of get an idea. And we see in the northern district, there's been an increase in building permit activity, particularly with regard to value. When you look at all the commission districts, no surprise, the downtown District Three, we've seen an increase, and it's been pretty much the focus of development in the city over that period of time. But then surprisingly, over the last two years, you're starting to see a balance of building permit value among all five commissioners. So the disparity, the difference, if you will, between all of those has become a lot less in recent years. So the study area we're looking for begins at the Rybavich-related Marina and extends to the north end of the city, just north of 59th Street. So looking at some of the developments and the zoning in the area, most of what you see in the brownish area is multifamily 32, and we do have some other entitled projects that were approved. You've got Osprey Park, which is zone recreation open space. To the north, you've got two Jeff Green projects that are approved as planned developments and a DSI, which have not been constructed yet. And then further to the south, you've got other RPDs in Alba and Marina Village. So looking at it from an aerial perspective, you see from north to south, you've got the FPL Manatee Center on the north end. Jeff Green actually owns three properties labeled here as two, three, and four. Further to the south, you've got, again, Osprey Park, I'm sorry, Brian Chapel Park. You've got a cluster of single-family homes. And as you extend this further, you see, again, another city park. You've got the Apogee Project that is going through site plan review right now, a high-rise residential project. You've got the Alba development under construction. And then anchoring the southern portion of the study area is the Rybavich-related Marina redevelopment. As you may remember, that was approved for six towers, a total of 1,059 residential units. So we did an assessment of every lot within that corridor, and zooming in, what that information includes is the property control number, the owner, the address, the acreage, the use, the value of the property, the zoning, and the number of units. So what we did was an analysis to see what could be built under the existing zoning within that property. So again, we took the study a little bit further and started to identify what could possibly be redeveloped. So when you look at projects that are already entitled, or larger developments that we think are probably not going to redevelop in the immediate future, we identified all those parcels in red. So of course, you've got the Florida Power and Light property at the north end, you've got the Jeff Green properties that are fully entitled right now, between Flagler Beach Club, Parcel Two, and 80 Points West. You've got the Palm Beach House, I mean, existing condominium that's probably not going to be redeveloped. You've got a city park. The area reflected in green is 5,400 North Flagler. We've had a development group come to speak to us about, about building a high-rise residential tower there. Just south of there, a cluster of single-family homes. You've got the Placido Mar condo, which probably won't redevelop, Osprey Park, Apogee that is in review now, Alba that's under construction. And then at the very south end, you've got the Regency Surf condo, as well as the Marina Village. So whatever is not highlighted in red, basically, could be redeveloped. So when you, when you look at the analysis of that property and identify the zoning that's ascribed to those properties, assuming everything got redeveloped at multifamily 32, you're going from 150 total units to a potential of 626. So it's a net increase of 476, or just under 500 residential units, which in the grand scheme of things, is really not that much. There are also commercial properties that are embedded in those areas as well, so if you assume everything that is going to be developed as residential, you would be also decreasing about 34,000 square feet of commercial, which would also result in a slight reduction in traffic. Then looking at the size of the parcels of what could be redeveloped, you only have three individual parcels that have a lot width greater than 100 feet. And those are the three reflected in green that have lot widths over 200 feet in size. And then when you look at the entire lot parcel, you only have a total of five that are greater than one acre in size. So what you, we end up seeing is a series of long rectangular strips, but not a whole lot of big parcels that could be redeveloped unless they are aggregated. Looking at building heights, that's kind of all over the place, the Jeff Green entitlements are at 150 feet in height and 20 stories. The existing Palm Beach House is 30 stories, Placido Mar is 26. Alba is coming in at 235 feet, currently under construction. And then the Marina Village, first two condo projects or apartment projects of the six towers, is at 399 total feet. So what makes this somewhat problematic is the lots that we're seeing in the North Flagler Corridor are generally about 100 feet wide by 400 feet in depth. And the way our zoning code works is you've got a 40-foot height in the multifamily 32 district. If you want to go above the 40 feet in height, you're allowed two feet in height for every one feet, one foot of setback. So again, if you're starting with a planned development, you've got 20-foot side setbacks on either side, that's not leaving you a whole lot of room. You've got 60 feet. So what happens is, if you want to go up another 30 feet, you have to add another 15 feet of setback to the 20 feet you've already got. So now you're looking at 35 feet on either side. So it's not practical. What staff is really concerned about, really, are several things. It's the massing of the building on the site, because again, what developers have been doing here and on the south end, and I'll show you that in a minute, is they come before the City Commission and they ask for waivers of that setback. So what you're left with, basically, are very tall buildings, in some cases, next to single-family homes. We're also concerned about the treatment of the building along North Flagler. So looking at the graphic to the top, we're concerned about how that interface of the building is to the street. What a lot of the developers are doing are pushing the building close to the water, which makes, makes sense. They want to maximize the view, but we're concerned about what's going to engage the street. In many cases, it's a parking garage, so we want to make sure that that's going to be enhanced. We'd rather see active uses along the sidewalk and along the street front. And then, of course, we're also concerned about the properties adjacent to the proposed building. If a building's going to be of significant height, we've got less concern if it's next to a park, we have more concern if it's next to a single-family building. So these are the three concerns that staff is, was looking at when analyzing this corridor. So again, it's no different than what you see on South Flagler. With the Bristol Leclerc Forte South Flagler House, all of those developments came before the commission because, again, with the multifamily 32, they were seeking waivers of the side setback to achieve the heights that they received for these particular projects. Again, back on the north end, you're looking at Alba, which is currently under construction. The other development that we're reviewing right now is Apogee. Again, they have an FAR just under three, they're going to be about 235 feet in height, both of these projects. And then you see how, in both of these designs, the garage engages Flagler Drive on the north end. So one thing we can do is, like what we did with the Curry Mixed Use District, you have a base height of 40 feet. If we wanted to establish a building height within this corridor, we could have a series of incentives, like we did with Curry. These are just, again, hypotheticals that we could employ, but we could have a workforce housing incentive, we could have a park improvement center. So again, we've got three parks between Brian Chapel, Osprey, and Gettler Parks. Again, we could award developers for additional height, provided they provide funding to improve these parks. We have a catch-all called infrastructure enhancements, those could be roadway improvements, the Flagler Drive could be lighting improvements. Kevin talked about the, the increase in the lighting cost. So this could be an array of seawall improvements, lighting, et cetera. And then there's a fire station up in the north end that's, that's getting old, and speaking to Chief Matty, there are some enhancements that are needed for that station. So again, we can provide enhancements along that range. So really, staff is seeking direction on, on three particular questions. One, should there be a maximum height limit within this corridor? Staff is recommending, if we want to be consistent with what Alba and Apogee are suggesting or proposing, they're coming in at 240 feet. We're continuing to look at workforce housing incentives. We have provisions, I'm sorry, we have provisions in place right now for downtown. If you remember, we passed an ordinance citywide that allowed a doubling of density, provided that 25% of those units get set aside for workforce housing. We have a height incentive in Curry Park, we're going to have a height incentive on the north, on the Broadway Mixed Use District. So do we want to do something here, and do we want to allow the developer to go even higher than the 240, if that's the number that the commission wants to settle on, if they do a workforce housing provision? And then secondly, do we want to impose conditions or incentives like we did with CMUD? Again, these are just some of them, we're not wedded to these, but these are some of the ones that we could consider. And then lastly, the impact of the building is what's probably paramount of importance to staff. So should there be a maximum floor area ratio? And floor area ratio is simply your building square footage divided by your land square footage. But should we impose a maximum FAR to regulate massing on the site? And staff thinks that's the way to go. We'd like some time to study this, if this is something that the commission would like to see, and then come back as we go through the rezoning process, or the code amendment process, to see what number we would recommend. So in a nutshell, that's our analysis. We'd love to answer any questions and seek whatever direction you would like to give to us.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioners, what are, what are your thoughts on this? I, I would tend to go with staff's recommendation, but we'll see what, what you all think. It's not a vote, obviously, this will, we just need some, see if we have a consensus, and then they'll bring it back to us for more formal action. Any thoughts, ideas? Commissioner Warren?
I agree with going with staff's recommendation, but I do believe that if we change the height ma, the height limit, that perpetuity should be a word that's on the table as we're talking about people being able to increase the workforce housing and increase the height, whenever we have the opportunity to ensure that those provisions for our workforce are for as long a period of time as possible, I think that we should take that opportunity.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm excited to see this and making sure that we provide incentives throughout our city for growth. You know, I was thinking about the incentives that we created for the Curry Park District, and I know that, you know, we were creative because there were some special needs there. And so I was appreciative to see, I, well, first of all, love that workforce housing is, is on top of the list. I think that that, we've set that as a priority for the city. Park improvements and infrastructure, always great throughout the city, but the fire station and substation improvements, I think that that's being creative and hearing what the residents need in that area. So I'm just curious if you could... So I'm just curious if you could share a little bit more about that. I know it says TBD on it. And so I wasn't sure if also there were any other items that maybe came up from the community that they want to see in this area, that we could build into these incentives.
Yeah, certainly, we'll go through the public hearing process and see what other incentives are there. Same thing we did for CMUD. In speaking with Chief Matty, as an example, she said the fire doors need to be replaced. That's a $700,000 expense. The building itself is pretty old, so there are probably some other additions. But we didn't want to get too much into the detail, but if this is something that the commission would like us to pursue, then we'll certainly sit down with the chief and her staff and, and see if we can come up with a list. It's not imperative that if we offer this as an incentive, that we identify the specific improvement. Just like in CMUD, we have a contribution that several of the developers have made, totaling well over $3 million right now for Curry Park. So we don't have to specify exactly for what portion of Curry Park that's going to pay for. But given the fact that the budget has increased a little bit, that's additional funds in height that the developers are contributing toward that improvement. So we can do the same here. Create a height incentive, and then identify what the specific improvement would be at a later date.
And just, let me add on the, on the fire station. There's a small community center there. It's probably one of the only facilities in the area that's kind of a public community center facility. So that could be an example, that could, that could be upgraded, because as Mr. Green said, there are significant investments needed in that fire station.
We, and we did commissioner, get a, a list of improvements from the neighbors. It's two-sided. A lot of these would fall into what I call the public improvement enhancement. So, again, we don't need to get that specific, but we've started to get input already from the public. So we certainly can, can look at that.
I'm glad they weren't shy.
Yeah.
President Ward?
I was just going to say, I know that staff has been really great meeting and listening to residents and discussing what their needs are, and they did come prepared and, and have a list. And so it's been, it's really been very nice having that as a backdrop to, to identify this and not be on our heels when it comes to what we think versus what they think. So, I, and I do agree with the FAR rationale as well.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I agree, I tend to agree to go with the staff recommendation, but I just wondered if you can clarify what, the areas that we're talking about are only the specific areas that are in the maps that you gave us, from, basically, whereas number one is Florida Power and Light to number 48? I mean, and those properties in between? Or is that, I, I just want to clarify if that's what the, the corridor we're talking about for this specific?
So this is kind of a match line, just so I could fit it on, on the slide. But on the right-hand side is the north end of the city. And then at the top of the left, where it says Osprey Park, it actually matches up down here to Placido Mar. So it's really from Rybivich related, all the way up to the north end of the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So do we have a consensus? Go with staff's recommendation, have them do some more? Okay. Got this, Green.
So Mayor, we'll do, we'll probably have a, a public workshop, probably in this room. We'll get feedback. We'll come up with some language, of course, before that meeting, some draft language. And then ultimately, we'll go to the planning board and bring it back to the city commission with coaching.
Excellent.
I have one, I have one more question, sorry.
Yeah.
Just because I know we've got residents in the room. What, what timeline do you think, from public meeting to moving forward? Would you, not, don't, like a hard line? Sorry.
Six months? Six months? Six months?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, maybe six months. I, I'll mention that we're also starting the process of amending our downtown master plan, which is going to be a, an effort as well. And just for the commission's sake, and I'm going to talk about this Thursday, our developer outreach, but we just had the, the two biggest months in the history of the city. We collected $2.4 million in building permits, both in August and September. I mean, we've never experienced that type of growth. So it's, it's been very busy, which is a good thing for the city.
Thank you.
So we'll say six months we'll, we'll target.
All right. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Just on mayor's matters, I did want to introduce to you all, put a name with a face, Deputy Chief Tony Shearer. Tony? I don't know if you've all met him yet, but you want us to clap? Chief, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words about your, your background, you, why, why you wanted to come to West Palm Beach. We're glad to have you. You came in an interesting time, that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Mayor. Why West Palm Beach? It's the, the greatest city in the country, right? Truly, truly believe that. Blessed to be here. Of course, it is an exciting time for, for the city and for the police department, with the support of many, many folks. We are coming in and, and hopefully bringing change. The three things that I really want to, to hone in on is accountability, ownership, and professionalism. So going to this, this police department, which is a very great police department, a lot of great persons in there. I think sometimes agencies and departments kind of lose their way. Looking at, and again, going back to, to leadership, oftentimes, you know, and, and I, in addition to living it, I do teach leadership. And one of the things I often say is that, you know, there is no such thing as a bad team. What we have, a lot of times, is either poor leadership and/or absent leadership, right? And a lot of times, you know, you, you have to be present, right? I, I think our folks need, need, need leaders that are present. So, again, not making any critical statements about my predecessor or anyone before me, but just looking at us going in a different direction and just leveling up, right? Leveling up and making sure that the, the police department is representative of this great city. A little bit about me. So I am in my 32nd year of law enforcement. I started as a police officer back in 1992, at 22 years of age. And I rose up the ranks and have done a little bit of everything, from, of course, uniform patrol, to gang unit, undercover narcotics. In the last five years as a police officer in Cincinnati, I was the training sergeant at the police academy. And that probably is where I really got the passion for training and leading and, and ensuring that institutions are holistic, with not only representing their city, but also ensuring that the persons in-house are living up to the standard, if you will, of, of being a true, true professionalism, right? I have had the, the opportunity and, and, and again, you know, I think a lot of times you, you learn by what you go through. In the city of Cincinnati, there were leadership challenges then as well. There were challenges with community police relationships. And I was in the position, as the lead training sergeant, to help institute, which was then the consent decree, right? So whenever police agencies are going through troubling times or crisis, sometimes, some agencies have to go through what's called, you know, with the DOJ, where they, they come in and they assist those agencies with building back trust, bringing back in leadership. And that was one of my main roles at the, the Cincinnati Police Department, and that is helping to institute the consent decree, right? So I, I do have some familiarity with police agencies being in, in crisis mode. We are, with, with the assistance of Chief Rahou, that is coming to us from the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office, who is a phenomenal man and a, a strong leader. I think there are many things that we are looking at instituting to bring back that trust and that, that level of professionalism, if you will, within the police department, right? So 12 years as, as a police officer, moving into the, to the FBI, which obviously everyone has heard about.
Big credibility.
Yes. I have served 20 years with the, with the Department of Justice, the FBI, just recently retired. The mayor did not give me a, a whole lot of time to take a vacation, but that's okay. You know, to whom much is given, much is expected. I truly believe that. So with the FBI, started in 2004. I've had held many positions in many different states, you know, Ohio, Washington DC, of course, in Miami. Have done a lot with international travel. And, you know, I served some time over in Baghdad, Iraq. Have trained law enforcement personnel in, in Spain, in Poland, in Hungary. So, you know, just, just, just a wide range of, as far as teaching and bringing leadership into not only other law enforcement entities domestically, but also internationally, if you will, right? So my last assignment was unit chief, where I was over covert operations, special operations, out of Washington DC. And then finally, I ended up back in, in Miami. So one of the unique things, I think, probably, that, that a lot of folks, you know, don't know, is that, you know, I won't say it's a specialty, but just my perspective is, is about collaboration, if you will. And most of my assignments within, within the FBI have been a part, been a part of task forces, where we are working collectively with not only the prosecutors, state, local, federal, county, bringing folks together, if you will, to be able to solve problems. And I think far too often, and, and again, looking at many, not being critical of, of a lot of police agencies, but a lot of times, folks try to do things individually, or they try to do things in silos, right? So one of my specialties would be breaking down those silos and helping us work collaboratively, if that makes sense. Really, that's, that's me in a nutshell. My, my undergrad is from Xavier Catholic Jesuit School in Cincinnati. And then I have my master's in National Security Affairs from right here in Nova. Adjunct professor. I teach at Quantico for a long time. You know, I've had the, the opportunity to go into various police agencies throughout the country and, and assess and look at what works, what doesn't work, how can things be improved? One of my last stints was going to Chicago and, and seeing how, you know, some of the, the, the crisis that their agency is going through with officer wellness. You know, unfortunately, Chicago probably has one of the highest officer suicide rates. And so, you know, police work is, is extremely hard. Leading is hard. But that's why, you know, I, I think looking at things from a holistic standpoint, being collaborative, and, and helping not only the police agency get stronger, but working with the community is, is absolutely critical. And, and I will argue that you cannot have good police-community relationships, healthy relationships, if you don't have a healthy, healthy police department, right? So we have to be healthy ourselves. And that's where we're going, right? And again, not passing any judgment previously, but there's always room for improvement. And I think that, you know, our, our agency here, which is a great police department, you know, just going back to the fundamentals, understanding our why. Why is it that we do what we need to do? Why is it that we need to ensure that wellness is, is integral in every day of, of all that we do? That's where we're going, right? So it's a pleasure to be here. It's an honor to be back in uniform. I haven't worn a uniform in 20 years. And it feels good. It feels good, and I, I look forward to the challenge. I look forward to working with, with the mayor and, and all of you all. I look forward to strengthening the city and the, the relationships, if you will, between the police and the community. So glad to be here. Thank you for, for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any, any questions for Deputy Chief?
Any questions? There's got to be some, right?
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. I think I have more of a comment than a, a question, and I'm happy that you talked a lot about trust, because I believe that trust starts with transparency and people understanding who we are and what we are and what we're doing. And when we talk about public safety, it's more than a statistic or a number or something that we're telling people that they're safe. It is, it is something that is internal, where they feel safe, and where we're creating a culture and a climate within the police department, where people feel safe, and externally in our community, where people know that they're safe. So I, I believe that we've made tremendous strides as a city and, and as a community for many years. I'm looking forward to us moving forward with transparency and with trust establishment. I believe that we have all of the fundamental components to make all of that happen. I welcome you and all of your experience, your background, you, the person, and everything that you bring to the city, and know that you have partners to, within, within this commission, that care very deeply about our city, and we want to see it be its best. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. One of my first community meetings was when the, the historic Northwest District, last week. And, and again, you know, preaching to the choir, one of the things that I wanted to ensure them is that, you know, from my perspective, I, I do not look at the community as, as a, you know, you know, and, and I want to make the difference between the community as our partner, right? I do not look at the community as a, as, as a, someone that is a customer, right? So, and making that strong distinction, that the community is not our customer, the community is our partner. And I think when you look at it from that reference point, you know, it makes all the difference in the world. We are truly partners in this together, and if we're going to be solving problems, being collaborative, it, it will take all of us, right? Anything else?
Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert? Comments?
I just want to say, welcome. Thank you so much. I look forward to working closely with you. And Mayor, I was just wondering if we could work possibly through Administrator Johnson to set up meetings with the new deputy chief and interim chief?
Yeah, I, I've already talked to the interim chief. By the way, he would have been here today, but he was on a previously scheduled vacation, so, but yes, we will get that, so that you have your 101s and, you know, get to know them better.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. I don't, thank you. I don't have anything else on the mayor's matters. It's been kind of a long meeting. So anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Okay, thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.